Board. Uh, supervisor.
Yeah, I have one. Um, I have one for Ryan Rave. He's from, uh, East California. And he passed away, uh, at the young age of thirty.
Okay, yeah, pure.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, we're gonna go ahead and, uh, resume our meeting. I just want to, you know, obviously say, say sorry about the technical difficulties. Uh, there are a lot of folks out there, uh, doing some things that are, uh, not respectful. And, uh, just want to apologize to everybody on, on the phone, Jake, and everybody who's getting it together. Thank you, but, uh, we'll go ahead and resume with our, uh, May eighteenth Board of Supervisors meeting. And we were at our moment of silence, so we'll continue there. And I know we had two, we had Supervisor Brown and Supervisor Crandall.
Uh, in East California.
And, uh, I'll ask again that we, uh, honor Debbie Olson, um, from, uh, that one of our longtime county, uh, county employees. Thank you.
Okay, Supervisor Sartier, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I hate to interrupt you.
Yes.
We need to just take another moment or two because our county council is having audio difficulties and we're trying to, um, assist. So if you can just give us a moment until we're sure she's joined, um, fully.
Okay, we'll go ahead and take a, uh, a quick break then for, uh, two minutes.
I think I'm okay now, sir.
Okay, great, excellent. Thank you, Anita, perfect timing.
Thank you, Jake.
Okay. Yes, moving right along our, um, our agenda here, we have, um, our four point one item. Consideration of an update of COVID nineteen is, uh, A and B. Presentation of Lake County's local variants of stage two of California's roadmap to modify this at-home order, uh, resulting from the COVID nineteen pandemic. And, um, we're gonna go ahead and turn this over to our Health Services Department, Dr. Gary Pace, and, um, go ahead and move through the process. So, go ahead, good morning, Dr. Pace.
Good morning, um, Chair Simon, thank you very much for the opportunity to talk again. Um, basically, what I'm gonna do today is just give a quick overview of the situation in the county and then, uh, uh, overview of the, the variants application that has been completed and that you all have in front of you and, and then open it up for discussion about it. So, um, so basically, right now, we have two new cases that appeared over the weekend. So this is case nine and case ten for the county. It's, um, these cases are associated with a case in Mendocino County and there's been a fair amount of media coverage, uh, in the local media. It's, uh, there, there's a church over in Mendocino that had a live stream on Mother's Day that, uh, this was associated with. We, um, the two cases in Lake County are, are family members and one of them is in the hospital at this point, but stable. Um, the other person is, uh, isolating at home. There are other family members and there have been some community contacts during the infectious period. So this is one of those cases where we don't know exactly where it came from yet and, uh, we are involved in, uh, case investigation, contact tracing. And, uh, but the folks seem to be stable at this point and we're in the process of trying to sort through who else was in contact during the infectious period and reach out to them. Um, the, uh, update on the testing situation is we, last week, uh, so the last couple of weeks, we've had county staff and, and volunteers setting up a drive-through testing site starting Thursday of last week with the help of some of our state, um, uh, representatives, Senator McGuire and, uh, Assemblywoman Aggie R. Curry and also with, uh, some definite advocacy from the Board of Supervisors here in the county, we were able to get a state-supported testing site. Uh, the company's name Verily started on Thursday, Thursday and Friday. It was set up at Lakeport this week, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday is gonna be in Clear Lake, Thursday, Friday in Lakeport. And we are also, um, working on getting it set up at least, uh, at least half a day a week or one day every other week in Middletown. Those, we're still getting the site established and everything. Um, if people wanna get testing through that site, they go on the Verily website and go through a screening and, and get an appointment or they can connect in through that, through the Health Department website or through contacting our phone line or email line. So, um, also just of note is the, um, uh, well, so we'll keep going on. So basically, at this point, the recovery, uh, process is what we're really here to talk about today. And, um, these two cases illustrate the importance of recognizing that this is, this virus is ongoing. It's out there, people need to be very careful. I, I feel a little bit like there's been a sense of, kinda like, well, we, it passed by us, we're okay now, but I really don't think that's the case. And these two cases illustrate that, but at this point, this is not surprising. The important thing of our application is that we're, um, ensuring that we have the capacity to do the testing and to, and to respond properly to cases when they show up. So the application, uh, is complete. We are, um, we finished it on Friday and got it to the working group and to the board at that time. We're, the process, the way this process is, is we discussed it last week at the Board of Supervisors meeting and then it's up today for approval by the board. Um, I'm sure there will be some points of discussion and we can talk about that and modify the, uh, application. Then after that, once we get all the letters, there's still a couple of letters ready. We need one from the board that's in support, then we will submit it to the state. The state will look at it and then, after they're done with their process, which seems to take a day or two, then they'll post it on their website and then it's free to, you know, then it's, then it, um, starts once the, once we hit the start date. Um, so basically, there's about twenty of the counties around the state now that are, that have already posted and that are up and running. Um, you know, this was not, this was, uh, part of the plan that I talked about last week was we were looking to go, just the, the target date being next Tuesday after the Memorial Day weekend. So this wasn't a, a kind of a race with the other counties. It was really about trying to get a good plan and trying to get all the pieces in place and trying to be sure that with the lake opening and everything, that we weren't seeing a surge in cases. I think these two cases that have come up this weekend illustrate that because if we start getting a bunch more cases this week, we may have to reevaluate. But at this point, we're assuming that things are gonna continue on the way they have been and we're okay. Um, there are really two prongs to the application and I won't go into it all, but I'll just give a quick overview of it. One is, is the public health benchmarks, which basically ensure that we can identify cases when they show up and respond them appropriately to prevent significant spread throughout the community. So these are like testing, which we meet now with the Verily site, which really just started last week. The, um, contact tracing and home isolation strategies, which we meet. The, uh, ability to house people in some of the hotels and, and some of the other strategies that have been set up and, and, um, you all talked about last week. And, um, and the hospital surge capacity. So all these are taken care of and they're outlined very specifically in the application. The other part of this is the business plan part, which is, as we move through stage two, basically, the governor's orders allow us to move through stage two in a faster, quick, more quickly than some of the other counties that are more heavily impacted. Uh, businesses that are outside of stage two, that are not permitted in stage two, we can't, we don't have the, uh, ability to address that. But the ones that are in stage two that are mainly gonna be affected are restaurants and some of the childcare, um, uh, facilities. So restaurants, the plan is here, is starting next Tuesday. Restaurants can open outdoor dining with proper social distancing. Uh, you know, and, uh, if they keep, if they post a plan and keep, uh, and, um, have a way to keep their staff and the patrons safe. Uh, and then two weeks after that, so the second step of this opening would be indoor dining with social distancing would start. Um, the other thing is childcare. So at this point, childcare is really only supposed to be offered for essential workers. Starting next Tuesday, it could be for everybody could have access to childcare and can use it. And then in two weeks after that, we, we are in the process of trying to see if we can get some camps set up and some other sort of social activities that follow certain restrictions. And so we're in the process of working on that, but this, this opening plan would allow that to happen in two weeks later. Um, another piece of this whole opening plan is that masking would be mandatory in the businesses, both for workers and for, uh, the patrons of the, of the, um, business establishment. There is a self-certification process that we're establishing, that you can get the paperwork on our website. That basically the businesses will go through the checklist and make sure everything's in place and they'll have a plan and then they'll post it at the entryway. Um, Alan Flora with the City of Clear Lake is helping us put together and the, um, EDC is helping us to put together a video to outline all this stuff so that it's a little more clear for the business community what the expectations are, which we really appreciate the help with that. We're interested in trying to get some sort of, um, compliance strategy and that's gonna be part of the discussion with the board tomorrow. So we'll see, we need to talk about that today or just wait till tomorrow. But basically using, um, code enforcement or some other, uh, workers within the county to help go out to the businesses when we have complaints and do education and kinda help them get in compliance and keep people safe. Uh, again, the start date we're aiming for is next Tuesday. And, um, you know, so I think those are the main highlights of it. We went into a lot of detail last week and I, um, you know, but this is, there's not really been any significant changes in this. And, uh, this, uh, that was just kind of a quick overview and some of the key points that may, uh, be up for discussion. So I think probably more than anything now, we oughta just open it up for you all and see where you want it to go from this, uh, from this point forward. So thank you.
All right, Dr. Pace, thank you very much for the presentation. We'll go ahead and bring you back to the, uh, the board for comment.
I can begin or run, either one.
Yeah.
Oh, go for it, Rob.
Go ahead, go ahead, Rob. Rob, go ahead and you start.
Sure, I had a couple of questions. Um, I, I know it, it keeps coming up and it, it's probably not a big deal, but it just kinda grates on me that I, I'm not seeing the relevance of why this keeps coming up that this, there was a church service on Memorial Day. They weren't at church, it could have been, they were watching a board, a board meeting, uh, you know, on Zoom with three of them in the same room, so I'm not sure. And I, you know, I'll just leave it at that. I think it's irrelevant and it just, it creates a, it creates a stigma to people unnecessarily. And, uh, you know, I saw a bunch of, you know, keyboard warriors, in fact, some of them were even county employees, you know, start talking about the religious type and I, you know, pretty much had a belly full of that. So maybe, maybe, you know, we can do what we can to, um, ease the, uh, the need for judgment on that. I don't know what, what the point is. They were also taxi drivers, so we gotta, you know, attack taxi drivers too? Are we just gonna stick with religion? So I'll go to the next thing. Uh, I know your recommendation is next Tuesday, but part of the reason that I asked for this meeting today, and I know, uh, at least one other board member did too, um, was not, because, you know, we could deal with it tomorrow if we're gonna open it next Tuesday. I'm hoping that we have a day's notice and we can have this discussion and, uh, open up, you know, sooner. Uh, maybe, you know, now or, um, sometime before the weekend. You know, we're, we're trying to, to do all these things based on science. That's what I've heard all this time. Well, there's nothing scientific about a date. Um, so I'm, I'm just wondering why Tuesday, the magic, the magic number, and then two weeks after that, I realize that's also a recommendation. Maybe it could be a week after that or three days after that. But I, I just wanna make sure that we're considering all possibilities and not just rubber stamping something that I don't necessarily buy into.
Dr. Pace?
Well, yeah, uh, so the, um, the issue with the date is there's a couple of pieces to this. One is, is, um, there, there is some science around this. The two weeks is after exposure, the, basically, you should see a surge within two weeks. Uh, three days wouldn't be enough, you're just starting to see the, the symptoms at that point. Uh, you know, you could argue ten days or two weeks, but the generally accepted, um, idea is that you wanna move forward with these in two-week steps because that way, for example, the lake opened up, uh, last weekend and so I'd like to see two weeks' worth of testing results to make sure we're not seeing a, a surge in cases. I think these cases that came up from last, uh, Sunday, uh, kind of just basically are part of that same strategy. If we start seeing a bunch of cases this week, then it's, I think it's not doing anybody. I, I understand the importance of opening and getting the businesses going and, um, kind of moving to the next stage. But if we open and then we get into problem, it's gonna require us to shut back down and, uh, to have the restaurants in a position where they buy all the food, they get all, all the doors open and then try to go back in and, and close things down rather than wait a little more time to make sure it's adequate. I, I mean, in my opinion, that seems like a risk that's not really worth taking, especially if people's lives are at, at stake here. But I mean, that's part, I'm, I'm, I assume that's what a big part of this discussion today was gonna be. But, um, from my point of view, the testing part is, is important. The other part is the, um, setting up the compliance piece. Um, you know, we're not really interested in enforcement and fining and shutting down businesses, but it is important to have, uh, some ability to talk to the businesses and help them make sure that they're in compliance and doing what's needed to keep people safe. And, um, you know, we don't really have a great mechanism in place for that. I, and that's really what's gonna be up for discussion tomorrow in front of the board is, how, what we're proposing is to, is to see if there's some way to get, um, code enforcement folks. But there, but we've talked to Scott, uh, Scott DeLeon and he's, you know, those people are all busy right now. And we can use Environmental Health some, but they only can really talk to restaurants and food-related businesses. So the other kinds of businesses that really should be posting these, um, safety plans and should be kind of accountable to this. And, uh, uh, we would like to have some people that could be in place to go out and talk to them about it and try to do education and try to get people into compliance. And, um, I think that's part of our responsibility to the public and part of the responsibility to the businesses that are trying to do the right thing. So, I mean, those are, those are really the two main points to, and I think the, the, I guess the third part is really, um, that this weekend is Memorial Day weekend, of course. And part of what we're trying to do is to, um, discourage out-of-town folks from coming up here. And, uh, it seems like that's almost just, uh, uh, opening the door in a way that just doesn't seem prudent to me right now. But, um, you know, this is part of the discussion today.
Okay, so that, if I could, um, so you, you went well, well beyond what the, the question was. Um, I, I'm still not seeing the, you, you didn't really explain to me adequately why Tuesday was the magic date. I realized there's two days, or two weeks of testing required or two weeks of, uh, of waiting to see. And, and now we're using that, the day they opened the boat, uh, they opened the lakes up to boats as the date. And, um, you know, what's it gonna be, you know, next week is gonna be, you know, two weeks after that because something came up, it was Memorial Day, you know, we have Mother's Day. We're gonna have two weeks, every two weeks, that we're gonna be concerned with something throughout this entire year, I suspect. And, you know, I, I appreciate the concern that you don't want restaurants to order food and have them lose it, but I would think that they are grownups and they can deal with that. They can take the risk, they can order the food, they know what the risks are. I think we need to quit assuming that we need to babysit these businesses and the, and people, for that matter, and allow them to be responsible. And I, I don't, you know, I kinda resent having it thrown back on me that, you know, if, if we continue down the road that I'm suggesting that we're no longer considering lives. That's just not the case. I don't want anybody to get it. I don't want anybody to die from it, but there's a lot more to living than dying. There's a, there's a, there's making a living that is part of living. There's supporting your families, we're in this over sixty days now of this and we had a, we have, we live in a county where you're, you're damn lucky if you're, you have businesses that can survive thirty days, let alone sixty. I'm aware of forty or, or four businesses right now in District One that have closed their doors, they're done. And, and that's just, just four that I've heard about in the last two days. That's gonna continue. I realize there's a balance. The balance includes personal responsibility by grownups. I, I looked at that roadmap and I don't know, you know, where that came from, but I appreciate, you know, the government treating me like I'm a fourth, fourth grader and I need to look at, you know, put on the brakes, back up, you know, do all this stuff. That's, that's just silly nonsense. That's government at its absolute worst, in my opinion. People are grownups, they're grownup enough to, to, you know, pay their bills, including the taxes that keep us all fed. And so I think we should give them the, the respect that they deserve in allowing them to open their businesses. They can do it safely, they can do it without harming themselves, their, their, um, customers and their employees. I trust them, I think that they can do it. They're the ones that put us here, we think, we need them far more than they need us. And I'll just end it with that.
Supervisor Sartier?
Um, so thank you very much. I, I, I gotta start off by saying something first that, um, this, this, this morning was probably one of the most frustrating things I've ever had, uh, happen here, uh, for us as a board supervisor while we are trying to honor two folks who passed away in our community and, and give them a moment of silence, that this is the treatment that we received. I just, I know it's the few and it's not the many, but that was one of the most embarrassing and infuriating things I've ever had to endure. Um, and, and I hope we don't have to go through that again. Um, and I think that it's similar in a sense, to segue back to the topic. Uh, it's similar in a sense that there's gonna be few who could care less about what orders we have in place and who could care less about the truth of the, of the virus and that it is, uh, something that we can't necessarily control and it is something that could bring danger to folks. Uh, there's few that will completely ignore anything that we say and there's the many that are gonna take the right precautions and do the right thing and, and take the right actions. Uh, so in a sense, I, I agree with some of the, uh, comments made by Supervisor Brown that I think businesses are gonna do the best that they can, uh, as they open up because they don't wanna see themselves going backwards and having to shut back down or anything like that. So I think that they're gonna take the right precautions. We're already seeing some that are taking all of those precautions at this moment in time. That's not all, but there's definitely some that are taking it very seriously or already getting masks for their staff and so on and so forth. But I, I think that there's, um, I, I think we're gonna see some, some good progress as we move forward. Um, and I think that we're already kinda giving them the benefit of the doubt by just saying, submit your plan. We're not necessarily gonna review it, we're not necessarily, necessarily gonna have to give you an approval from public health. Just submit your plan, just so we know you have one and then you're good to go. And then we'll go ahead and see if we receive any complaints. And I think that's already right there, we are placing some trust in our businesses by doing it. Um, as far as going over the, uh, application that we, uh, have here in front of us today, I, I, I too would like to argue the May twenty-sixth date. I believe it was May ninth, if I'm correct, that we opened up the, uh, lake to all boats. Uh, so as of this Friday, our two weeks will be over. Uh, and typically, uh, incubation takes about seven days to maybe fourteen days, uh, to show up. And so I would hope that at the very latest, we open up by Friday. Uh, there is nothing, every, every time we've taken a step, we've had concerns, rightfully so, we've had concerns and nothing has occurred from that. Uh, I just received numbers, I'm not sure if everybody received numbers from, uh, Director Scott DeLeon, uh, for the, uh, number of boats over the weekend and over the week. Um, and also gave numbers from twenty nineteen. In twenty nineteen, let me just get to that email real quick. In twenty nineteen, there was, during the same week period, there was sixty-five visitors versus two hundred and sixty-four residents in a week's worth of activity. This last week, there was a hundred and fifty-nine visitors to two hundred and fifty-eight. So the number of visitors is definitely reduced in comparison to what it used to be. So this is not like we opened it up and it was business as usual. Uh, is the number higher than what you maybe would have wanted? Yeah, and I think we should continue to say that out-of-county folks, please shelter in place and do your own activities in your own community. Let us do our own activities in our community so we don't spread the virus. Um, but I think that we can see that just by opening it up doesn't mean that we're going back to, to our normal previous years. I think that we have half the population, and I'm totally just generalizing, that is nervous and scared of the virus and the other half that's nervous and scared of what they're not able to do to, for their everyday living. And so even if we open up the stores, that doesn't mean everybody's just gonna go into those stores and start doing it like it's business as usual. There is still this, um, this overarching, uh, nemesis of a virus that people are thinking about. So we're not just, just because of opening up, that doesn't mean that it's gonna be like what it was before. So I think we need to look at it as being fifty percent or maybe even less of the activity that we see. Um, and I think that anytime we guess as to human behavior, uh, on something we've never seen before, uh, opening up on the twenty-sixth move, opening up earlier could be the right move. There's, there's nothing but a crystal ball for us to look at to say whether or not that's gonna be, uh, a detriment to our community or not. And so far, with every iteration of loosening the restrictions, we have not seen any results from that being negative for us. So far, the results have been positive. Even the one that we just got yesterday, those were not two because of opening up the lake. Those were two who went either way, broke the rules of the, uh, shelter-in-place, went out of county to go to some sort of gathering and, and then came, came back and now they're positive in our community. We're not gonna stop everybody, that, that, that kind of activity is gonna happen from time to time. Uh, again, we need to reiterate every single time, no, uh, no, uh, non-essential traveling at this moment in time. But so far, the actions we've taken to reopen and loosen the restrictions have not resulted in negative, um, a negative impact to our community. So I, I would like to suggest that we open up as soon as possible. I, I haven't gone through every single county's, um, attestation, uh, application, but I've gone through the majority of them. None of them set a date further than when they received the approval from the state to start opening up. And some of them have opened up as of May ninth, I believe is the earliest one from Amador County. And so they've all slowly opened up into stage two, but never with a future date to get started. So far, we would be the only one to have a future date to get started. And the majority of these counties are in Northern California, meaning it's not like everybody's gonna rush to us because we've opened, there's already places that are open because those counties have already been approved to go ahead and do those stage two, uh, faster, more efficient process of going through it. The other part, uh, on there is the, um, I was looking at, uh, which one is it? Sierra County attestation, uh, application, attestation, attestation form. And it says something that's really interesting and I know we can't do this on our own, but it says here, and I'm looking for it, sorry it's not right in front of me. Uh, should the increase in community spread of illness be significant, the public will be asked to return to stricter protocols and stage three would be delayed. Should no significant increase in cases occur over a period of thirty days, then we will enter stage four only with the California Department of Public Health approval. And they say the same thing for stage three. So we're not allowed to do it without California saying yes, but California approved their application. And on their application, it says, should no significant increase in cases occur over a period of at least thirty days, then we will consider advancing into stage three only with California Department of Public Health approval. And I think that's at least a game plan for how to get to stage three. And, and that doesn't mean that we have to hurry up and get there. We want thirty days of, of knowing that everything is good and we're also gonna ask the state to help us move into stage three because again, we're, the state is making a decision for the full state and we're not LA. And so I think the smaller counties, more rural counties, the low population density is setting themselves up to at least have a process to get into stage three. And I'd love to add those types of words and, and, uh, addition to our application. It doesn't mean we're gonna get there on our own, we're still gonna have to follow through with the process to get there, but at least we have set a mile We're still going to have to follow through with the process to get there, but at least we have set a milestone on how to get there if we can. And so I, I appreciate it seeing that. And as you know, stage three involves hair salons and barber shops, uh, more activities within schools and things like that. And, and right now, those are things that we're hearing a lot of complaints to. Those are things that we've submitted letters to the governors for. Uh, and so it's, uh, it's again, it's not something that we're going to get to on our own, but at least it's part of our, our, uh, map, our roadmap on how it is that we can get there. The other part that I was just wanting to bring up, and I didn't really see this in other county applications either, and I'm going back to ours, is that for the, um, the, um, the measurements to go back in case things aren't going into the positive, uh, in a positive direction. I saw that if there's more cases, which in my belief, and I believe our belief, we're going to see more cases because we're testing more. And, and so it's not just a matter of testing positive, but there is a concern there because the more we find out people are testing positive, the more it's likely that there might be a spread because obviously anybody who has the virus has the ability to spread it. It's not like they, they're, they're always all contained. But there's, I didn't see on there until it got too far down the pipe where it starts talking about deaths, where, so we should be looking at the surge in our hospitals. Because if we have, um, tests that prove positive, but we're not seeing a surge in the hospital, then maybe that's that balancing act where we're like, okay, we're seeing a lot of asymptomatic, maybe with a virus. Because we, we still have a lot of unknowns about the virus. We don't have a hundred percent proof that as we move into summertime and the weather gets warmer, that it can or does not, uh, have any impact to the virus. We don't know. It's, there's no full evidence of it. The science has been talking about it, but there's no full evidence to say yes or no. But if there is, then maybe we'll see more asymptomatics and not so much acute illness that brings you to the hospital. So I think it needs to be a balancing act of hospitalization and cases and not just cases. Uh, and then at, at the one later point in the, um, form, it talks about, you know, deaths and, and then hospitalizations. But I think we need to look at hospitalizations before we get to the deaths part. Uh, and also not just cases without looking at the hospitalization part. So those are my, my things. I know in there it talks about the mandatory masking. I'm going to be honest, I don't think I saw too many applications from other counties that did not have the mandatory masking in place. I know that we talked about it's only for businesses. It's not for just, uh, walking around in, in public. We have such a low density population that walking around normally, you should be able to evade, uh, as someone else and keep six foot distancing. But when it comes to being inside a business, and I was in a hardware store over the weekend, it's pretty much impossible. You're never going to get your six feet. So I, again, I, I think that looking at all the other applications, that seems to be par for the course for the majority of counties, that you will wear masks, um, in order to move forward into the stage two phases. But, uh, the change of the dates, uh, the addition of stage three and stage four, at least roadmap, um, sections and the, um, addition of looking at the hospitalization surge while also looking at cases and looking on if we need to pull back or halt any progress through face, uh, stage two. Those are my additions that I'd like to, uh, bring up. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Sabatier. Supervisor Scott.
My question is for Dr. Pace. Um, I know now we're under, um, state orders, we're not under county orders. And if we do qualify for this variance and, um, if we find out that, you know, something happens and we no longer qualify for this variance, how is the state going to come down and redirect us? You know, are they, what's, where, where do you see them pushing us back to?
Oh, let's see. You know, we don't know yet. They haven't, it hasn't come up yet. I think basically that it sounds like they are not going to take it away. It's sort of up to us to determine whether we need to enact, enact more restrictions or not. I mean, I suppose if things started spiraling out of control and we didn't do anything, they'd probably come in. But at this point, it's the way they're messaging it is, once you get the variants, you're in the phase where you're, it's local control, like Supervisor Sabatier talks about. It's the, then we have local control through, through stage two.
But they will be coming back and looking to see when we want to jump to the next stage, if we have qualified and done the right things to be able to move forward.
The way, yeah, the, the, the way they're messaging it at this point is that they're going to, at some point, make a determination when counties can move to stage three. They are not going to let anybody go to stage three at this point. And then they haven't determined exactly what that's going to look like. But presumably it's going to be something like the counties that have been doing well in the accelerated phase of stage two can move to stage three if things remain stable or in state. What they're doing is basically watching what the cases look like, what the number of deaths will look like, how the hospitals are managing, all the stuff they're putting in there. And if we're all managing pretty well for a while, then they'll probably open the door to stage three. But it's, they, they have, they have not given any messaging about that at all.
So it's, it's going to be up to us to make sure that we're doing the right things to be able to make sure that we can continue moving and jumping through these hoops to move our county forward. I think that's a message we need to make sure we're pushing, that we need to do the right things to keep pushing forward or to allow us to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Scott. Supervisor Crandall.
Yeah. So just want to kind of recap. I, Bruno had said a lot of things, uh, that I, that I kind of thought of, but you know, I'll try to not repeat the same thing. But, um, I, uh, from what I understand, I think, uh, when we, when we had the lake opened up a couple of weeks back, I remember, discussing that, uh, we would need two weeks of observation. Um, I think we'll be obtaining that at the end of this week. And, uh, in, in the meantime, we know that since then, there's been, uh, two extra cases that have come down the pike. And, and, and we know that there's always going to be more. I mean, this is, this is a, this is, we're, we're, we've got to be real about it. We know they're going to come more, but let's just hope that there's no, no deaths. That's the important thing. And, uh, when, when, uh, when you're dealing with people and death, and luckily we haven't had any in our, in our county yet, but other deaths that take place and the protocols that are, are intact with that, um, you know, really, and I only say this just because of empirical knowledge. It has nothing to do with fear. I don't like using fear tactics. I can't stand that. There's no reason to live in fear. But just be cognizant of things and aware, like of funerals and gatherings and things of those natures and people coming from different areas and controlling that. I think Rob used a good example a couple of weeks back about, um, you know, migrant workers coming up this summer and how we're not going to be able to control that measure as well. There's other things that are going to be taking place in this county that are going to have the same deal, no matter what we say. Um, I'm not trying to advocate one way or another, what we need to do in that fashion. I'm just kind of laying it out there. We need to do our best. I, I think that we've done a lot of good work, uh, in, in the COVID recovery group in, in the, um, in the light of, um, opening in a good fashion, a safe fashion. And, uh, uh, you know, I think that it shouldn't be, you know, I, I, I understand there's some folks that feel their rights are violated if there's masks and things like that. You know, i- i- if it gets you open, I think that let's, you know, I'd rather be able to let people open that can, you know? Um, I, you know, I just, empirical knowledge again, you know, going into different stores, going into Verizon, watching them deal with people. I think there's stores that are very similar, they're not allowed to be open right now. They could be doing the same thing. So, um, but at the same time, you know, we have to be really careful. There's, our community is, um, not only our communities, but our, um, our county is an elder, elderly community. And we need to be super careful in that. And so, um, you know, I, I, I'm glad that we're putting this application forward. I'd like to see it move forward. And, uh, and I do, I'm glad that you asked Tina, um, what would be happening if, if, um, you know, there was a surge or something like that and how we would be able to kind of cinch back or whatever the case may be. Um, I know, um, I don't like that this, this, uh, whole topic is dividing our county. I can't stand that it's dividing the country. For me as a person, I, I don't like that. I really wish we could work together, you know, we're, we have differences of opinions, but we have to respect each other. And for me, it's just getting really trite to see people being childish, calling people names, things like that. You know, um, you know, just, I, I, it's not, it's not something that needs to be happening in this county right now. I think we really need to just put our heads together and do the best we can for everybody, um, in every way, shape or form. And people need to open businesses or economies. The economy is a factor in this county. It's, if we do something now, uh, that's safe, we should do it. And so, um, uh, that's, that's really all I have to say.
Thanks Supervisor Crandall. Yeah, I want to just thank, uh, Dr. Pace and Denise and everybody who's worked on, uh, putting this together with all the staff. You know, the community in the county, the calls we're getting is, you know, to, to move this thing forward. We're at a point right now that we have an availability to take a step forward. I think, um, everything we put together obviously is, like Bruno said, you know, there is no crystal ball. We're doing, um, what we think is needed to protect the health and safety of our individuals in the county, but also balance the economy, uh, and the devastation it's going through right now. So, uh, my key points are, uh, number one, I want to say I agree with, uh, Supervisor Sabatier on putting a, a step forward, a path forward for, uh, stage three and stage four in this letter. Somehow, I don't know how it's ordered. You know, we can work on that as it goes through. The masking issue I think is a big part of it. We've been hearing about that for, for weeks on both sides. Just had calls this morning of folks that do agree with it and the ones that don't. I think having the masking at this point for the businesses is the proper step to move forward with this. So I'm in agreement with that. As far as the application deadline, I know that, um, these applications I think are being approved one to two to three days or it's happening pretty quick turnaround. So my thoughts and being on the reopening committee, I look your way those things too. If we submit this thing and it's nobody open, I would be in support, obviously. If we can open on Friday, we can open on Friday. I agree one hundred percent. Business owners are smart. They understand the liability that's going to come with this. And I just want to put it out there because I am a business owner. This is a different world than we've ever operated in business, both on the employee side for workman's comp issues, OSHA issues, and also individuals who are going to be coming into the business. It couldn't be any more important right now to make sure that you have the proper protocols. Because let me tell you, as a business owner, you can be sued for everything. Temperature's wrong, you slipped off a chair, I'm not kidding. And this is, you know, one thing I've been reading up as a business owner, there's a fifth wave to this thing. It's individuals who'll be looking potentially to sue businesses that aren't doing the proper thing or say they got sick. And that's a real concern in this new era.
And, uh, Do businesses have a duty of care to their workers?
I don't know who this is. Someone's talking now. Yeah, so those are all things that, uh, thinking about, but I think the plan puts us in a good position. We're doing what they were asked to do, puts us in local control. But my thought would be, uh, moving forward with the date as soon as possible if it's approved. We still have the two week benchmarks and what will drive that will be the cases that are coming. I want to thank all the board members to understand the reality of the situation, that we are going to be dealing with this to the end of the year or longer. And it's going to be something that, you know, really goes to our social contract with all of us and how we're interacting with each other out in the public. So, um, Dr. Pace and Denise, no one's supportive of it. Did add a couple of those things, uh, Bruno's suggestion for three and four. But other than that, um, the masking and then, uh, when this thing's approved, uh, opening up as soon as possible. Because whether we do it on Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, no difference. And I think our businesses are ready and, uh, willing to move forward. I know we're going to have folks that I've already been contacted. I'd like Dr. Pace, when you talk about the masking, one of the things that haven't came up, there are folks with health issues and, and other things as far as masking, and they will have to make those decisions obviously individually. Because at no point would we ask anyone, uh, to put something on, um, over a health issue. So, you know, those are, those are the main things. And I just want to thank, uh, Dr. Pace and everybody who worked on this thing and getting it together. We got it last week. It's here. They heard the community. So people are being heard, even if we disagree on, you know, points of view on this thing, um, we're moving forward. So thank you very much. And that's all I got to say. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, can I ask a couple of questions and, and respond to a couple of things that came up?
Yeah.
So a couple of the things are, is Supervisor Sabatier brought up a couple pieces about the, um, the triggers. And, um, you know, the, the thinking about this is, uh, hospitalizations are an important part of it. Just, just getting a few asymptomatic cases is not going to cause an increase in the restrictions having to come back. What we're, what I'm really looking at here is, do we start getting cases where we're having trouble, getting adequate testing to the people, to the contacts and tracing the contacts and, and adequately isolating people? You know, there's a, there's sort of a threshold. If we stay under the threshold, if we have a few cases at a time, that we have the ability to test all the people that are around them and to do the contact tracing and to isolate people, then we can stop the flow of the transmission. But that's really before the hospitalizations. Once you get, start getting a bunch of hospitalizations and the hospital's starting to get overwhelmed, that's when we're starting to be in, uh, a bit more trouble. Or if we're at the point where we can't really, there's more cases than we have the capacity to really deal with and we have to start calling in reinforcements from outside, those are sort of the triggers around that. So just to sort of, uh, mention that. I think the, the issue with the two weeks is, uh, you know, if the board feels strongly that two weeks is where we need to go, then I would like to talk about it a little bit because my concern is really, I mean, Supervisor Brown's right. It's, uh, the two week period is from when the lake opened would be, you know, whatever, Friday or Saturday. And, uh, with the Memorial Day weekend here, I think that is a complicating factor because almost for sure, it's going to bring a bunch of people in from out of town. And, uh, so I think the question is, is, um, really, how, you know, how do we manage that? We've been trying to give clear messaging, but you know, the more you have kind of the, the wraparound services, the more people will be wanting to come in from out of town. So I think that's really the rub with that one. To bring in a bunch of folks from the Bay Area where there's a lot of active cases is kind of counterproductive from a public health point of view. But I understand from an economic point of view, it's a good thing. So, I mean, I think that's just a question. And I think the, um, this thing about, uh, adding in the, the, um, message, the, the verbiage around stage three and stage four is, I mean, is that something that seems important? We can do that. I don't think it's going to change anything. I mean, basically, the state is going to make a green light for stage three and people that are ready would then probably do a similar application or they're just going to move everybody through at the same time. But I suspect it'll be the other. So, you know, that would be fairly easy to put some, I don't think it's going to change anything, but we can put something like that in, like the Sierra County one. The one other thing I just want to mention is, you know, we didn't specifically articulate opening retail business, you know, now retail, small retail businesses can, are open for curbside pickup. But I, a- as we've been talking, I think we're, we might want to put in specific verbiage, opening that up to more in-store, um, uh, context. So we're, we're checking on that right now, but that wasn't added in there. So before we, you know, I think that's something that we would probably like to add in, that to loosen up the, um, the, uh, curbside pickup to people being able to go in some of these retail, uh, places. So anyhow, those are the, those are the things. I think the main question for today is that, 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 that there's a little disagreement about is the date, starting the date. And I think, you know, in my mind, it's before Memorial Day weekend or after Memorial Day weekend. And really, for the most part, that's around the, um, uh, kind of out of towners coming to the area or waiting till after the big weekend for them.
Okay. Supervisor Sabatier.
A, a couple of things, um, and, and I mean, no disrespect at all to our neighbor Colusa County. But if you look at their application, it sounds to me like the state's just approving any application that is submitted as long as your numbers meet the criteria. So you can test enough, uh, you haven't had that many cases in the last fourteen days. Cause it was a very bare bone skeleton application for their one sentence response compared to our paragraphs that we're putting in our responses. So my guess is that what we're doing with businesses where you just submit to us a guideline and well, you're approved automatically, you don't need to go through the approval process. I think the state is pretty much doing the same thing. I, I, I think as long as you meet the, the, the bare bones of the guidelines, whatever you put in there is going to be approved. So I don't think, um, our application will be disapproved at all because we meet those criterias. Uh, definitely want to thank, uh, the hard work to getting our testing done because that's really why we had to wait until at least the end of last week to get to the point where we can meet the state criteria. Uh, and now with the Verily Labs, uh, setup in there, now we meet all the criteria and we can go ahead and have this discussion and submit it. Uh, also appreciate Chair Simon allowing for the, uh, special meeting to happen. Uh, I know that, uh, it was requested, uh, to have this and, uh, thankful that we're having this conversation today rather than Tuesday. And, and the reason I bring this up is, we have to have a balance. I think that we did a, a great job, and I'm going to thank Dr. Pace for this, for knowing what we needed to do to protect ourselves to the best. We went one week before the state to go ahead and shelter in place. And we not have that happen, please?
Hang on, Supervisor Jake, can you mute the room except for the speaker? Jake, you're hearing me?
Yeah. Could you just kick out Mike? Because Mike's being rude. Hi, Mike? Thank you. Um, and so, um, lost my train of thought.
Hang on, hang on. Jake, boot iPhone X. Remove iPhone X. Complete meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, and I think that we did the right thing to protect ourselves and everybody did a really good job of, of doing what we were asking everyone to do. Then the governor did exactly what we did a week later. And if you look at the impact of what Shelter in Place has done in comparison to other hotspots throughout the country or the world, to me, it spells that this is what we needed to do. But now we have a new balancing act that we need to do. Uh, we have some people that are continuing to be paid, whether they're working or not. We have some people who were on fixed income, whether that was through some sort of welfare program or some sort of retirement program, and nothing major has changed for them. There's some that are in the hybrid situation where they are receiving some fixed income and also working, and there's some that are getting nothing at all because they're not able to work. We have to figure out how to help those people rather than telling them to hang on strong for longer. And that's even one day more is asking for too much. We know that we can do this. We have 20 other counties very close to where we are that have been doing this. And I think we can do that, and we have to balance that out. We're not trying to open the door wide open. We are just taking that next incremental step. Uh, and I think it's important to, for, for us to remember this. I don't think any of us expected to be here eight weeks later. Um, it, it was something we felt we needed to do. Maybe it was going to be two weeks. Maybe it was going to be a month, uh, but it just seemed to keep going and keep going and, and not for bad reasons. But at this point in time, we have to figure out how, how, how we're going to make that balance act, balancing act kind of teeter the other way just a little bit. We have those limitations to see if we teeter too far, we can pull back. Uh, I think this is a good plan, but, um, I think we move forward. The last thing is on the application, it talks about how do we protect the stage one, um, essential workers? Now, I'm, I'm guessing, but I don't necessarily see it written on there that we're talking, we're talking about frontline folks like law enforcement and hospital workers? Because we're saying that through the Moak, um, we are going to supply them with PPE, uh, if needs be. But I'm not sure that I see things like grocery stores on there or hardware stores, and they were stage one essential workers. And so I'm wondering, is that a part of what Moak can now go after and help them get? Or are we choosing which stage one essential workers that we can help? Uh, based on what the criteria is at the state level to help pay for some of this PPE?
To answer that question specifically, yeah, that's mainly talking about healthcare workers, first responders, et cetera. Because the, the, um, the, in the grocery stores, they're not needing N95 masks. It's basically just gloves and cloth face covering. So it's, uh, you know, this is more for the people that are being exposed in a close encounter with people with their secretions when, so it's, it's really more around the healthcare, first responder, law enforcement kind of situation.
So, so I, I, I don't disagree with what you're saying, but I disagree with the concept and the fact that I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, we only have one hospitalization for COVID-19, which is the current one right now, right? The previous eight did not have, uh, hospitalizations, correct?
Uh, one other one was in the hospital as well.
Okay, so, so two, uh, because from what I understand, we have a low caseload. We're not seeing a huge surge in our hospitals, but our grocery stores every single day are dealing with hundreds of customers, which to me make them almost more frontline when we have small amount of cases. So I, I would, and I know it's a state issue where PPE is not going to be paid for unless it's for healthcare purposes or through the public health, uh, but I would like to, uh, look at, uh, maybe adding a, um, an extra for tomorrow's meeting to see if we could write a letter saying, hey, you need to help support our grocery store workers. Because if we don't have grocery store workers, how are we supposed to give food? Uh, and I think that, that we can't just, uh, they were stage one essential because it truly is essential and we need to figure out a way to support them. And I understand we can't do that financially ourselves, but I think we need to ask the state to review what is allowed through, uh, the Moak.
Appreciate, uh, that comment there, Bruno. Um, I, I, you know, I think I know the answer we're going to get from the Moak is, um, you know, if you run an individual business, I, I'm not sure we're really good through there, but, um, we can ask that question, obviously. But I think I already know the answer. Um, Superintendent Scott?
Yes, I, um, going back to talking about the dates. I think if we were to, um, wait to open till after Memorial Day weekend, I think we would still have people coming up and visiting, visiting us regardless. So I actually like the fact that maybe if we do get, um, approval from the state for our variants, at least we would have the masking in place. So when people did come up, they would, you know, be required to wear a mask when they did enter our grocery stores or other businesses. So that's the only piece that I, I kind of like, um, that if we were to go with that before, people are going to come here regardless, um, for the weekend.
Okay. Dr. Pace, I had one clarification question. When you were talking about, um, uh, folks being able to go into business, you're talking about restaurants included in that or no? You're just talking about like the antique store or something like that? That, Mercantile, uh, those types of things?
Right. I mean, it's, it's more the, the situation where, um, like what people can do in Costco now. It's, uh, to be able to go into the smaller businesses like that. Whereas right now, what they're supposed to be doing is just doing curbside pickup. Um, we just didn't specifically articulate that, and I, and I think we probably want to either, uh, just add a statement about that or something in there. So I think if we're, if we end up moving the dates, we would just want to add a statement that just, uh, allows that as well. Just, just makes that clear. But right, restaurants, dining in restaurants would have to be, uh, in a later stage. That, that's the way we're saying it. Two weeks down the road.
Right. Okay, just wanted clarification on that, you know, uh, just so, you know, public, everybody's on the same page as we move forward here. Supervisor Sabatier, did you have another comment?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay. All right. I, I know there are a lot of folks in the room here. So, um, are there any more comments or questions at this point from the board? Okay, seen none. We're going to, we're going to go ahead and try and open this up. I know we've got a lot of written comment that we've received as board members, uh, on all sides of this thing. And, and we'll do everything that we can. Obviously, that's record. We'll make it through. We're going to open it up to the room. Obviously, as Supervisor Sabatier and myself both said, we had an unfortunate incident earlier, and what we're going to try and do is keep this thing civil. I understand how passionate everybody is on one side or the other of this issue, but we're going to keep this thing as organized as possible as we move through it. We want to give everybody a chance to get their two minutes in and give their points of view. And then we will try and move through the process and get something decided here, um, as soon as possible. Um, so we're going to go ahead and, uh, really would like to see if we can get people to raise their hands. Um, there's a little button there. You push more, you can raise your hand, um, as we can do this, so we can kind of control it. If something gets out of control, uh, we'll go ahead and try and, uh, move through that process. I, as the chair, will attempt to have a, a conversation maybe in another room or something with them. See if we can get on the same page where people can get their views out. Uh, and if not, we'll, you know, we'll just kind of move through this process. This is all new today, and, uh, please just bear with us as we go through it. So.
Mister Chair, you have about, uh, 10 or so hands up. And I wanted to, if you want me to time the comments, and if so, how much time?
Yeah, two minutes, two minutes here. Uh, I think two minutes is appropriate today. We do, I know it's a little time, but I know we got a lot of folks. Uh, we got a lot of things. We have a lot of written comments. I believe the written comment will be added in through.
I believe Jake can just unmute them one at a time rather than opening up the whole.
Okay.
Okay?
That sounds good. Let's kind of go through that. So if you can, raise your hand. If you can't figure out the button and you're on camera, just raise your hand and we'll figure it out and we'll make sure to get to you. Okay, go ahead, Jake.
All right. So the first hand raised I have here is from Eileen Miller.
Okay, Eileen? Are you there? Yeah, that's not, that's not a good one. Good job, Jake.
Jake, you can just remove that person from the room entirely. Thank you.
All right. So the, uh, next person that has their hand raised is Kelly Cooper.
All right, let's give Carrie Cooper's, let's go.
Trying to track you down in here. Kelly, you're unmuted now. Can you give me a sound check?
Hello?
Hello.
Okay, I just have a few, uh, comments. Um, the numbers that the scientists have set, you guys are saying, or Dr. Pace is saying, um, they're going by the science. The numbers have never actually been what they said they were going to be. There was supposed to be these millions of cases and that didn't happen. And that was my first one. And other counties around us are open. Why aren't we? We have the least amount of cases and all these other counties are open. Um, our businesses are suffering and we, we should be open. Um, and the last thing is masks. I would, I wouldn't suggest masks because you have these, um, employees that are having to wear these masks for eight hours a day and it's just, it's overwhelming. It's, they get hot, they can't breathe. It's not healthy for them. If you want to make masks mandatory, make masks mandatory for people going in, not the employees. Just, that was just, that's all I had.
Thank you very much. Okay, Jake?
All right. So the next hand we have raised on this list, uh, Eileen Anderson.
Yep, let's see, Eileen. Go ahead and unmute. You're going to unmute her, Jake?
I got, uh, you're unmuted now. Give me a sound check.
Hello, thank you.
Great, thank you.
All right. I just want to say amen to Rob Brown. I appreciate you representing me and my opinions. Anyways, I'm here to voice my opposition to the proposed mandatory requirement of wearing face masks and to voice my support for opening up Lake County for business. We are now two months into this pandemic. We sheltered in place. We did our part to flatten the curves so that the hospitals would not be overwhelmed. Over the weekend, we got two more cases, but before that, we had eight cases with eight recoveries. That's a survival rate of 100%. We did that without mandatory face masks. If folks are elderly, immune compromised, or just frightened by the doom, gloom, fear and panic that is being pushed by some folks, by all means, wear your face mask, continue to shelter in place. But for those of us that see the reality of the numbers, we should not be required to wear a mask. I have three personal friends that have had to shut down and go out of business. That breaks my heart. This is not right. The folks that are making these rules continue to draw a paycheck while the small business owners that are the backbone of Lake County are dying on the vine. Gary Pace on April 29th, who still draws a paycheck, by the way, banned all large gatherings in Lake County. Mr. Pace is not from Lake County, and rather than taking a measured approach and looking at the data, considering the demographics of Lake County, he just followed the dictates coming down from Gavin Newsom. I am so disappointed in our board of supervisors. We elected you to represent us rather than having, rather than having the wherewithal to stand up and say, let's wait a bit, let's hang on and see what, what's going to happen here. You bow to the opinion. You have denied high school graduations, a proper ceremony for children. That could not be, that because of this knee jerk reaction. If we have a surge, if it doubles, that's 20. If it triples, that's 30, 50, 60. That will not overwhelm our hospitals. We need to think practically and reasonably. And I appreciate your time, and I know there's many that have the same beliefs that I do. Thank you.
Thank you, Eileen. Okay, Jake?
All right. Next on the list, we have Denise. Denise, you're unmuted. Can you give me a sound check?
Yes.
Oh, there you go. Hear you. Thank you.
Hi, um, I'm, I'm just going to have to go along with Eileen. I'm going to have to go along with, um, um, Bruno. I, I think that we need to move forward. Um, I believe that we are being held back by, um, government overreach. And we need to move our county forward. We are dying literally on the vine here. Uh, we have businesses that will never come back. And if we don't start supporting our businesses, first of all, no one's going to get paid. This, this county is going to go completely broke. Again, um, Gary Pace does not live here. Gary Pace, I, I, I don't understand why he should be dictating how this poor county is run. This is what we elected you board of supervisors for. This is what we elected you for. Please, please, I'm asking you, do your job. Thank you.
Thank you, Denise.
All right. The next hand we have, okay, yeah, the next hand we have raised is Michael Green.
Okay.
Uh, Michael, can you give me a sound check?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Excellent. Thank you. Uh, thank you. I just wanted to speak in strong support of the masking policy. Um, can't have it both ways, people. If you want us to open up the county, we have to take all steps necessary to make sure that everyone, visitors and locals included, are protected. And a facial covering is not a huge sacrifice to ask for that. On the specific action items today, on the attestation document, um, I agree the date is kind of arbitrary. I don't see a huge advantage to waiting to the 26. I see a bigger advantage to, uh, uh, starting to educate the businesses early if they have the opportunity to get open for this weekend. So my suggestion would be changing the language in the attestation application to Friday, May 22nd. And as part of that, on the attachments document for this agenda item, I would update Appendix A, the self-certification forms for businesses. Um, this is not about a control issue. This is, at the end of the day, a public education campaign. Um, if people do want to open.
Lost him.
Up these visiting locals, um, facial coverings are the way to go. But we do need to buy a little time to, uh, educate, uh, the businesses that are going to be affected by this order so we can get their buy-in, so we can have local entrepreneurs that like to make masks. This is a business opportunity for them. Uh, so I, I'm all for, uh, proceeding with the attestation. But I would, uh, I'd say there's no big advantage to waiting to the 26. Uh, if the board had interest in, uh, maybe looking for a earlier, softer opening, uh, this Friday might be a date to look at. And thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Go ahead, Jake.
All right. So the next hand we have raised is from Brian Dubrowski. Brian, you are unmuted. Can you give me a sound check?
Yep, can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Awesome. Okay, so, um, I'll just start, uh, with, I'm going to be kind of direct towards you. Awesome. Okay. So, um, I'll just start, uh, with, I'm going to be kind of direct towards you, Dr. Pace, but it's not meant to be disrespectful at all. I'm just going to kind of. I have some questions for you. I've heard several reports that masks could have negative impacts, which include the, they act as a trap for moisture, which becomes a breeding ground for bacteria. They can also cause some people to have a difficult time breathing. Mask packaging's also state that masks do not stop the spread or reduce your chances of contracting a virus. In light of these facts, how do you find it logical to deprive citizens of their right to choose whether to wear a mask or not? Also, at the beginning of this, you stated that you had no intention of mandating mandatory masking. Why the change now? I believe that the board should consider this as my body, if I want to wear a mask in America, it should be my choice. Especially when we are talking about a situation that is as controversial as masking. We should not be allowing rubber stamps to be placed on our freedoms here. And thank you. That is all I have. Please answer the questions, Dr. Pace.
Mr. Chair, you determine if, uh, any responding.
Dr. Pace, would you like to respond to that question or?
Sure. Um, so I mean, I, the masking question I know is sort of controversial, but from a science point of view, it's actually not considered problematic. I mean, most of the evidence is pretty clear. The mask is, does, uh, facial covering does not really protect the person that's wearing the mask. It's protecting the other people if you are in a situation where you're asymptomatic, but you have the virus. So the virus is spread through droplets. Wearing a facial covering stops the droplets from going and going out very far. And, uh, so that's really the thinking. I mean, it's, you know, I, I, I can understand that there's some concern about personal rights and things, but you know, motorcycle riders need to wear a helmet. Uh, people in a car need to wear seat belts. It's a similar thing to that. And this is really about protecting the other folks in the community, not really protecting themselves. So, and I feel like, I, I, I mean, I, I, I'm surprised if I said that I wasn't ever going to do mandatory masks because I always, I've been pretty clearly messaging this pretty much all along, if not all along, that once we started getting to where we were loosening up on the restrictions, that would be when we would need to have the mask because we're kind of taking this blanket that's on all of, all activity and all kind of social interaction and removing that. But now we're trying to be a little more, uh, specific about protecting people by, by putting some specific safety mechanisms in place like the mask. So.
Thank you, Dr. Pace. Okay, Jake, let's go to the, um, to the next, uh, hand up.
All right. The next hand up is from, uh, Mark and Lucia. Trying to unmute. Yes, yes.
Can you hear me? Okay, very good. So, uh, first of all, I wanted to, um, say a big thanks to Dr. Pace and his staff for working so diligently. Um, their plan looks well formulated, uh, concise. And, um, what we need to be doing going forward, in my opinion. Um, as far as whether masking, which seems to be some, some kind of an issue for people, is important or not, I think it's settled science for people that have been paying attention to what's been in the actual news and real news outlets that publish facts. Um, the use, use of masks around the world has managed to contain the spread of this virus to a great degree. And I think wearing masks is, is a common courtesy to your neighbors and friends to say, you're willing to try to protect them in case you are, uh, carrying the virus and you don't, you don't know that. So, uh, to me, it's a matter of being neighborly and concerned uh, and doing the right thing. And, um, I just hope that Dr. Pace recognizes that most people in the county in surveys have shown that, shown this around the country are more concerned about catching this virus. Uh, and wearing a mask will go a good ways towards ensuring that the spread doesn't happen. So I think, um, just the science, the polls, the surveys, uh, everything points in the direction of what Dr. Pace is doing.
Okay, thank you very much, uh, Mark and Lucia. Uh, Jake?
Yes. So the next hand we have is Sally Peterson.
Hi, good morning.
There you go.
Um, thank you. Um, I just wanted to say that, um, I really appreciate all of the hard work that Dr. Pace has done, um, and his staff. Um, I know there's been some comments that, you know, he's not from here, but I think we hired him for his expertise and he's, uh, displayed that. So, um, I don't care where you come from, as long as you're doing your job. Um, I think that, uh, wearing face coverings, it doesn't have to be a N95 mask, but a face covering would be prudent. Um, if we're going to open up the county to out of towners, um, it's my understanding every case we've had has been, uh, someone coming from out of town or had some kind of, uh, of, um, contact from, uh, from out of county. So, uh, and then testing is still a concern of mine. Um, I live in South Lake County in Middletown and, you know, there's no testing down here. And, um, I think because we haven't had very many cases is because of the lack of testing that we've had early on. So, um, so really the data is a little bit skewed for us, but, um, but I, I would be, I would be in favor of opening up to face people as long as we had some kind of face coverings, uh, mandatory. Uh, thank you very much.
Jake?
Yes. So the, the next hand we have raised here is Val.
Jake?
Well, I'm, uh, I tried to unmute you here. Maybe you can unmute yourself.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, yes, we can hear you.
Great, thank you. Um, I just have to reiterate what Brian said about the masking. Um, as a person that cannot wear a mask due to, um, my own personal issues, um, you know, you're putting me in a position where as a, a customer walking into a store, you know, am I going to be questioned and, and demanded that I wear a mask? I mean, it's, it's ludicrous. I am responsible for my own health and wellbeing. You know, I don't expect someone to wear a mask on my behalf. And, you know, I, I'm researching masks and I'm, you know, it says right there on the packaging of N95s that they're not meant to prevent transmission of an infection, you know, a bacterial infection, a viral infection. You know, they're dust masks, dust. I, you know, and if you're, uh, you know, if you're an employer and you have to demand that your employees wear masks, you're really setting yourself up. You're opening a big Pandora's box because now you have employees that are wearing masks for hours on end and have the potential of getting ill from breathing in their own CO2. I would really, really leave it up to the individual businesses, whether or not they want to have their employees and/or customers wear masks. You know, it, don't, don't make it a mandatory thing because there are people out there that can't not, they can't wear masks. There are people that don't want to, you know? We've proven time and time again that probably 80% of people you see in the grocery stores are wearing masks. Those 20% are not a threat to anyone else, you know? It's like, I'm not going to set myself on fire to warm another, um, so to speak. So that's all I have to say. Um, thank you for your time and I would just hope that, um, you let us be individuals and make our own individual decisions regarding our own healthcare. Thank you.
Thank you, Val.
All right. So the next hand we have raised here, uh, Catherine. Can you give me a, uh, give us a sound check here, Catherine? Yes, hello.
Can you?
Yes, yes, we can hear you.
Um, well, hello, everybody. Um, uh, Catherine Reese here. And I just wanted to say, I recognize that everybody, whether you're on the board of supervisors, Dr. Pace, people wanting the county open, people wanting masks, people not wanting masks. We all have our reasons for that. Um, I appreciate and respect them and that we're all in a difficult situation, whether you're on the board, the doctor, or the community members. So, um, I also don't like the negativity and, uh, flat out, gosh, just kind of evil that some people have taken on because they have a differing opinion. I think having a different opinion is a beautiful thing. So having said that, yes, my opinion is different than some of yours. Um, I want to agree that, um, masks scientifically are not going to help us. They're going to give us a false sense of security. Um, people will touch their mask and their face a lot more when they have them on. They feel like they're doing the right thing, which makes them feel good. Other people feel safer when they have them on. Um, however, touching everything back and forth, it's just not a positive thing. You guys are going to do what you're going to do. Um, there will be a trickle down effect with them or without them. I think people already come into this county, like it or not. People already leave the county, like it or not. Um, that's just a fact. That's not a, um, but other counties that are loosening and being more welcoming, people are going to go there and shop there and do the things they need to do there so they can feel welcome and able to do it. That's just my opinion. Um, or more people will buy online because they don't want to go to the stores, um, with the mask and negativity that, um, goes with it. Because if you walk in a store and people look at you funny or don't look too funny, whatever. Um, but I agree with letting people.
Two minutes.
Um, something that was said early on that, okay, let me finish that. Something I said early on about policing businesses, um, and having more code enforcement and having more tattletales. Come on, really? You're really going to turn the world against each other? That's not a positive thing. We are adults. We didn't get into businesses because we're faint of heart. We got into businesses because we're willing to work hard and for the most part, we want to do the right thing. So let us do that. Don't try to control everything we do. Some of us that have businesses, we're not employees for a reason. Nothing wrong with employees. I'm just saying. You need small businesses for the world to go around and for everybody.
All right, Catherine, if you.
Taxes. Thank you. Three minutes, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Catherine. Okay, Jake.
All right. So with that, we don't have any more hands up currently.
I know we've got a lot of written correspondence that came in, um. Like, can we have, Carol, you have written comment?
If, if I could speak to that, um, you know, uh, the public has gotten so used to, uh, these, these reports being given on Tuesday that we, we received public comment for today and for Tuesday on this same topic. And so we were able to upload most of it before the meeting started. All of it will become a part of your board's public record. Uh, there was a batch of it that we were not able to upload before we started the meeting. And once the meeting is in play, we cannot add to it. But, um, but you should be able to see it. I also emailed it to each board member beforehand. So, uh, with, with hope that you might have time to look at it. So.
Mr. Chair. Supervisor Brown?
Yeah, I thought about this and you know, this, I don't, I'm not sure this should be any different than a regular board meeting. We have people submit things and we just take it and it becomes part of the record. We don't read that, read it for them at regular board meetings. So I don't know that it'd be any different. If somebody wants to offer public input like the last speakers have, then they should be allowed to, just like they would a normal board meeting. But be, having everything read, every email read, I think that's, I, I don't, I don't know how that's going to be productive.
Yeah, I do know that, um, you know, obviously we're transitioning, working through this process here and, um, you know, this week we, or for this meeting anyway, we appreciate getting all the correspondents directly forwarded to all the board members and it will be part of the, uh, the public record. I do, um, you know, I do, I do agree with you Supervisor Brown on that point. And I just want to make sure, um, you know, obviously always look to, uh, Anita. Um, if Anita's on the phone, just like to have her weigh in on that conversation.
That's probably not bad idea either.
Okay, sorry, I found all my buttons. Hello, Mr. Chair.
Hello, Anita. Good morning.
Uh, I think initially your board was allowing the emailed responses and questions, et cetera, to be read because there was still some getting used to the idea of people appearing by Zoom. And there was an organizational structure there that had to kind of be put into place. Now we see that Zoom is very active. I think that what's going to be important is that you let people know that if they submit emailed comments, those comments will become part of the record. They may or may not be read during a board meeting or simply that they won't be read. I know, for example, Sonoma County, uh, does what Supervisor Brown was suggesting, which is they take the, the Zoom, the, I'm present at the meeting remotely comments live. And I believe they simply then have the written comments via email become part of the board record. So it's not, it's not an unusual process to do it that way. How your board decides to handle this is ultimately your decision. Uh, as long as the public has an opportunity to be heard, there is no wrong answer here.
Thank you very much. But I think, uh, with that, we'll go ahead and, um, move forward. Jake, you said we had no more hands up at this point in the room, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. So we're going to go ahead and add those to the public record. We can go ahead and bring it back to, uh, to the board at this point. I know we have two sections here. We had item 4.1, which is uh, consideration updated COVID-19. And we already did that. And B, presentation of Lake County's local variance stage from the two of California roadmap modified stay at home order resulting COVID-19 pandemic. And, um, go ahead Supervisor Shabatia.
Thank you. Um, Michael Green brought up something that I had forgotten, uh, about when reading through the, um, social distancing protocol for the businesses that they need to fill out. At one part, it says measures to prevent unnecessary contact, check all that applied to the facility. And one of them says strongly recommend employees to wear cloth based coverings. And when I read that, it just kind of jumped at me because throughout the whole document that we're also looking at the application, it talks about that there would be mandatory masking for businesses. Uh, so kind of curious as to was that just in case that, that, uh, the mandatory masking didn't go into play? Um, and, and the masks are definitely, uh, uh, a difficult issue, uh, because of the fact, I mean, I just went to the hardware store the other day and picked up a five gallon bucket with the mask in front of your face. It's really hard to breathe hard when walking around with a five gallon bucket. But as soon as I was outside, I took off the mask. And I would suspect that for some, not all employees, because some employees are always constantly interacting with folks, that when you have a little bit of a lull, they take off the mask. It doesn't mean you have the mask on for eight hours a day. Uh, I think that it falls in line with the idea of no shirt, no shoes, no mask, no service. And I don't know the last time that somebody got a ticket or a citation for no shirt or no shoes. But at least it gives the business the ability to say, hey, I want to be safe. I need you to go wear a mask if you want to come in my business. Um, I think that the, the, the whole, um, uh, tattletaling, it's already happening. I mean, social media is packed full of it. I'm sure that, uh, Moak gets emails all the time about these people are doing this right. These people are doing this wrong. Um, unfortunately, for some reason, we seem to, uh, behave like third graders at times, uh, when it's none of our business. But at the same time, I think that, uh, it's a small, hopefully temporary pathway to going back to what we want all to be back to. And I, I know that it's a, it's, it's a hurdle. Uh, I'm not going to say it's a simple one, but I think it's a safe one because here's the fact, it's the asymptomatic person that in all honesty, becomes the most dangerous possibility for our community. Cause it's when you don't know that you have the virus and you're not protecting yourself from spreading it to others that that becomes the biggest issue that we might have to deal with. So I, I think that it's, uh, it's a compromise that I was willing to make. At one point I was saying no to the masks. But I also understand that in order for us to submit this to the state, it requires both the board supervisors and Dr. Pace's signature on there. And I know that Dr. Pace is looking out for the best for our health. And I think he's done a fabulous job of that. We're trying to push him a little bit to try and look at the economic perspective, the social perspective, which he's been looking at too, but his number one priority was health. And I think that in order for us to have all the signatures, we need to move forward. We keep going with, uh, the, the mandatory mask for businesses. And, and I'd love to, I'm looking forward to the conversation on enforcing. And, and I'd love to, I'm looking forward to the conversation on enforcement, which I'm gonna be honest with you, as light as possible, it's almost a step higher than highly recommended as it was before. Uh, because again, uh, no shirt, no shoes. When's the last time you saw somebody getting a ticket or a citation for that? Uh, so I don't think that we're gonna be seeing anything much different than that. And, and we need to, we need to remind people, we do live in an elderly community. We do live in a medically fragile community in comparison to other areas around us. And we need to, we need to think of other people. It's not just about ourselves. And it's a small compromise for all of us to go through to make it work. And obviously, there's exceptions to all rules. If you have an issue and you can't breathe with the mask on because of other health issues, there is bound to be ways to make that work for you and we could figure it out. Uh, it, and no, no, no rule is ever necessarily just black and white. Um, and, and it's for our safety as a community and it's for our ability to move forward. If this is the sword we're gonna die on, then we may not move forward. And so let's compromise, let's make it work.
Thank you Supervisor Shabatia. Mr. Chair. Okay, yeah Supervisor Brown. So I'm not gonna belabor too much because I think we're headed in the right direction. I, I do disagree with the masks only, you know, it's a, there, there's a, there's a couple of reasons. One, you know, we're, now we're saying it's scientific, but I don't know whether I believe the World Health Organization or the CDC who now says it's advisable, who by the way are the same World Health Organization and CDC that lied to us initially and told us it wasn't healthy and in order to save them for, for others. So I'm not sure exactly who to believe as far as the science on that. And, and it really doesn't make any difference what news source you listen to. Uh, they were all broadcasting the same lies and, and uh flip flop of, uh, both of those organizations. So that really doesn't make any difference. And, you know, and somebody mentioned that masks should be regulated because it's a courtesy. Well, you can't regulate courtesy. Can't regulate being a good neighbor, neighborly, or whatever the other term was. You rely on that. And I think that will happen. It's highly recommended is all we're going to do anyway. You can regulate it, you can require, you can make it a requirement. It's not gonna be enforceable, uh, like anything else has been. And it's just gonna be highly recommended. I think you're, you're better off to have businesses buy into the concept as opposed to telling them, this is by God, we're, we're us and we're making you do this. That's just, you know, that's just not, that's not how it works. And it'll, and, and I agree, it gives a false sense of security. It does not keep you from getting anything or giving anything. You've got a lot of activity, you're, you're, you know, touching things and you're doing all this other stuff. You know, just like any other flu or cold or anything like that. You have to wash your hands, you know, all this stuff that most of us did even before we were, we were told to do it by Big Brother. So, um, I, I, I think we're heading in the right direction. I don't agree with the, with the masks being mandatory because we can't, we're not able to mandate anything. It just makes, makes us feel better, I guess, about having this ability to do this. But the, the, the big thing is, you know, we're concentrating on the health of our community. That's, you know, the medical health, the economic health, but also the behavioral health. There's, that's a huge component of that here. And opening up a few days early, I mean, think about this for a second. There's a lot of businesses that were told initially that you're not essential. They think they're essential, imagine that. They think that their business is essential to take care of their families and take care of a community and, and do all these things. So to, you automatically pit one against the other by saying you're essential and you're not. That, that is the, the, the biggest fallacy that we'll ever see in, in this entire, um, uh, experience that we've had is when we began to divide our communities by telling one is essential and one is not. They're all essential, they're all essential to us. And I think the quicker we get people feeling better about themselves and that we need them and we want them or we want to represent them and support them, the better off we're all gonna be. So I think we get this thing going as quickly as possible. Obviously, we monitor it, you know, we don't know how many cases we've had. The one at the jail, I, you know, that was such nonsense. You got an inmate who's been there since November and, and they're tested in April 19th and they came up with it? What, they just magically got it? So that must mean there were other cases there, if that was even a real, an actual positive test to begin with. No one's even questioned that. They didn't give it to anybody? You know, that's just, that, all that stuff goes unquestioned. And that's bizarre to me that, uh, you know, miraculously somebody got it after being in there for four months, five months. And, uh, no one else has come up with it. So that, that's kind of weird. But anyway, I think we're moving forward in the right direction. I, I do oppose the mandatory masks. Um, we'll have the conversation tomorrow about using orders to enforce something that's not enforceable. I think we'll have that conversation tomorrow. But in the meantime, uh, I'm for opening up as quickly as possible, get things going, monitor it closely. But I, I, I don't support the mandatory masks. Okay, thank you Supervisor Brown. Supervisor Scott.
Um, you know, I just want to go back to some of the comments that were said earlier about, um, that the board of supervisors are not doing their job and Dr. Pace is, you know, not looking out for our community. And I think they need to be aware that we are here today to try to move our community forward. We are following the state's guidelines, putting in those variants because we care about our community and we want our businesses to open. So we are trying to do the right thing. We're here on a Monday to push this forward so we can start opening our community. That's, I just want to make that clear.
Thank you too. Supervisor Crandall.
Yes, um, yeah, just thinking about a couple of things, you know, um, just hearing some of the comments and, you know, I appreciate everyone having their, their insight. You know, people are affected by this and they need to be heard. Um, and just as much as we hear from people that, um, you know, they they want us to reopen and that we're not doing our jobs, or whatever the case may be, there's others that feel that way. And let's flip the spectrum, let's say that we had a doctor that was pro opening and, and in, in essence, rubber stamped opening rather than the other, we'd be hearing it from the other side just as much. We're doing our best to mitigate. Um, I know that some folks don't feel that way and, and, and it makes sense why, because they're directly affected by it. So it's a very, um, fearful thing. So I understand, that's why I don't take insult, I just want to highlight that. I also think too, though, just thinking about the masks, you know, I, I did say that earlier, you know, maybe we should, you know, just, just to, just to get things going, do the mask. But when I think about it, you know, businesses, um, there, is there a way that we could, and this is kind of maybe for Anita, or I don't know, maybe someone answered this and I didn't hear it. But is there a way that when they open, just highlight, you know, I'm not, I'm not going to, as a business, require mandatory masks by my employees or by people that come in, whatever the case may be. And they accept that liability on their own. I mean, I think they already do that whenever they open in general. But, um, that way, they don't feel like we're infringing on them or whatever the case may be. Because the reality is we cannot, um, enforce it. I mean, we could say it all day, don't do it, but I, I just, I, I really know that there's no way to enforce it. Um, you know, people will have the choice to go there or not regardless. So just like people have the choice to go to certain places, um, right now or before this whole pandemic, they would go places because of whatever the issue is, or they wouldn't go there because of whatever the case may be. So I know that we're limited here in the county with the different businesses and different entities that we have. I only bring that up because I just want to problem solve. So, um, yeah, so I, that, that's my question. I don't know if that was the answer, uh, I just wanted to highlight that.
Supervisor Shabatia.
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay, so I brought it back forward as action, so, um, Supervisor Shabatia, go ahead.
So, uh, I move to, uh, approve Lake County's local variants to stage two of California's roadmap to modify the stay at home order resulting from the COVID-19 pandemic with a change of the date being upon, uh, approval by the state of California. And to add language about stage three and stage four, which I just emailed, um, Gary Pace, uh, Denise Palmeroy and Carol, which I read to you guys directly from, uh, the Sierra County, uh, application, which just states with approval from the State Department is where, how we would move forward for phase, uh, for stage three and stage four. So it's not like we're doing anything that would go against the state. So that is my motion.
So that's a second. Can I second for discussion, just real quick? Um, I just, I just want to say that, um, so this, this just means we're submitting our application in that. And I, I just want, kind of want to highlight this for the public to know that it's still dependent on the, the state, right?
Needs to be approved.
Right, so, second.
Okay. It's been a motion and a second. So Carol, can you be clear? I, I just want to be clear on that if I can. So you're Go ahead Supervisor Brown. You're talking about making the approvals for the mask and for your recommendation for opening on Friday or what?
My, my recommendation is as soon as the state says yes, that we have the ability to open.
Based on the plan that we have before us?
Yes, so the date, May 26th would be taken out.
Okay, and, but the masks will be left in?
At this moment in time, I'm not offering that to change, yes.
Okay, alright.
Uh, Supervisors, the, the action that your board has before you today is in the next agenda item, which is your letter of support for the, the, the submittal of the plan is, uh, is done by Dr. Pace. But he can certainly let you know what his sentiments are about any proposed changes you, you make. But the submittal of the plan comes from him and, and we didn't agendize it for an action on the part of your board.
Okay, sorry about that Carol.
But your, uh, Mr. Chair, but your board can certainly indicate by consensus what you'd like to see changed or adjusted.
Yeah, I think we've been, uh, pretty clear on, um, obviously, uh, well, we can, I guess we can go through it. I guess adding the extra language for three and four, I know it sounded like we had a consensus there. Um, you can nod your head or whatever, at least see me and Bruno and Tina. Uh, Rob, where you at here? You only need three heads nodded. Yeah, I know, I just wanted to, I was just double checking on you. Uh, the other thing obviously is the masking issue.
I am, I am nodding my head, you just can't see it.
Yeah, alright. Uh, you know, and so, uh, I'm, I'm, I've made my point clear on the masking issue. Um, and I, I think Bruno was ready to move forward with the masking issue.
Yeah, I'll just emphasize on that, and, um, you know, I, for me, I, I'm gonna make my mother wear a mask. She's in this, and she's in the position of that, you know, uh, any elderly person that I have care for, I'm gonna encourage them to wear it. Um, but again, I'm not partial to mandatory, making it mandatory because we can't control it. But, you know, so I, either way, we have what we need. So, um, I just wanted to
We're looking at, so do we have three that are in favor of the masks? I guess that'd be a question for consensus. Yeah, looks like you have three there, Dr. Pace. And then the last one, I think there's a complete, uh, consensus with the board is we submit this thing to open up as soon as possible, uh, for our community. I think, uh, we have all five who have voiced that opinion. Supervisor Shabatia.
And, uh, thank you for going through those Paces. I, I just have a question for Dr. Pace, uh, because we're supposed to, uh, sign a letter of support for this, uh, roadmap, which we're asking for changes to be made. Uh, I guess my question to Dr. Pace is, is he still willing to sign this with those changes?
Yeah.
Um, so I think the way it's set up is the health officer and the health department puts together the plan. And basically says that we're ready to move forward from a public health point of view. And we've worked with the business community to put together the plan. The board is basically saying they agree with moving forward. That, um, so it seems like we're in agreement with that. It's, and, uh, it seems like the move, putting in the verbiage about stage, stage three and stage four is fine. Uh, uh, that, that's fine. I think the date is the, is the question I have. And, um, um, so I guess, you know, you all are the ones that are in the community here. We just had two new cases, there's community contact. I would like to get a couple more days of seeing, getting, tracing the contacts and just making sure we are in a position where we're solid like we have been. Um, rather than we start seeing a surge this week from the lake opening a couple of weeks ago and from this new set of cases. So I guess part of it is, is, um, from the public health point of view, it would be wiser to wait a little while longer. Uh, and, you know, you all know what's likely to happen this weekend with people coming up from the Bay Area and everything. I think, you know, the difference for Lake County over many of the other counties that have moved forward quickly is they're much more remote. You know, we are right next door to Sonoma County that has over a hundred active cases right now. And, um, I, and I'm not saying every one of the counties, but most of the counties that have moved forward quickly have been in a little different situation. I, I just feel like we're fairly vulnerable because of the, the proximity to Sonoma County and the Bay Area. So I guess the question really is, is how, um, you know, you all are the experts on the county and it, it, do you feel like opening up this door a little further and bringing in the, um, more restaurant support was, is gonna draw a lot more people up from the Bay Area and that's gonna be a problem? Or do you feel like that's kind of not really an issue?
Supervisor Shabatia, then Supervisor Scott. Go ahead Supervisor Shabatia.
Alright, thank you. Um, and you, and you did say that, uh, some other counties are, uh, near high case areas. I know that there's at least four or five counties that have been approved, uh, that are around Sacramento County, which is seeing, uh, higher, uh, rates of new, uh, cases than Sonoma County. And I think that we all know that being in Lake County, that the reason we love Lake County is because we were isolated before COVID-19 and we're definitely isolated during COVID-19, which explains also the, the rate of cases that we've had here. Um, and I think that we expect to see some sort of rise of cases, not only from testing, but by opening up, which is why we're trying to do this in a very cautious way. Um, and if you, if, if you, if you look at what's been going on street level, a lot of Lakeport has been open, even though maybe they shouldn't be open. I'm not gonna name any names of businesses. And same thing in Clear Lake. And we haven't seen the surge coming from that because they're doing it in a way because they're doing it safe. They're not just willy nilly opening up, they're still wanting to be safe. And I think that as, as a, we, we need to have faith and we need to have trust that we're going to do the right thing. Half the population outside of the, uh, of, of the county is not gonna want to come here. The other half, whatever percentage of them wanted to come here, they're gonna come here anyways, no matter if we change the rules or not. And so I think that we need to, um, make sure we look at the numbers. Uh, make sure that we, um, know exactly what's happening in our hospitals and our cases. Uh, but I, I would hope that by, um, I, I, I would like to see us open as soon as possible. And if it happens to be, uh, Tuesday, great, if it happens to be Wednesday, great. Uh, but the, the later we go along, a- and the reason I say this is because we've been asking for local control for such a long time. And now that we have the opportunity for local control, we kind of want to slow it down. And I, I, I will, I think that we have the ability to move in an intelligent way. And I think that's what the discussion has seen as a consensus of an intelligent forward movement. And I, I would like for us to do that as soon as possible.
Thank you Supervisor Shabatia, go ahead Supervisor Scott.
I think for me, I, I know I've said this before, regardless if we open on Tuesday or Friday, um, they're gonna be here anyway. And I think if we have more opportunities to spread the people out within our community, I think that'll be better than having, um, just having some businesses open. Um, I, I, I believe that they're gonna come here anyway. So, um, I think we need to have the protocols in place for, um, them needing to wear masks.
Thank you Supervisor Scott. Alright, Dr. Pace, I know we, we need to get to the next agenda item, so we will. You know, obviously, uh, you've heard the support one way or the other, you are the public health officer. I know so far you've done the right things. I know some people may disagree with that, but the cases are where they are. I think because of some of the early actions taken by our public health officer. So given my opinion on what, what I would like to see, but ultimately, we'll live with the decision that's made as we move forward through this process by our public health officer. So, hey, we've said it many times, agree to disagree and, uh, move forward in the best path forward for our community. And I think that's, we can lead by example here with this board. Um, so we're gonna go ahead and bring it back so we can get to our action item. Then we can have some more discussion, which is our four point two, our 10:15 AI AM item. Consideration of letter of support for submission of Lake
Consideration of letter of support for submission of Lake County variants attestation form as per requirements of variants to stage two of California's roadmap to modify the stay at home or guidance to county governments. Sponsored by an admin office.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, I put this on the agenda because one of the requirements of submitting the plan is to have a letter of support from your board, uh, as part of it. And so this is a simple letter that indicates your support and certifies that, or affirms, I should say, that that Lake County is meeting all of the state criteria to mitigate the spread of the virus. And that our readiness and response protocols meet the guidelines for acceleration of stage two. So it's a simple letter. Um, the county board letter is a requirement of, of the plan. The cities, uh, also offered letters, um, to complement the plan, but the board letter of support is the one that is required. We appreciate what the cities are doing as well in support of this.
I think we also had support letters in all of our packages and everything too, with the, uh, our hospitals, obviously too.
That's correct. Another requirement.
Yeah. Okay. We went on to item 4.2. I know we've had a lot of discussion that'll lead into this, but, um, go ahead Supervisor Sabatier.
I've got nothing. Let's sign it.
Okay. I will. Well, we, we do have to do, it's another item. So we do have to have a public comment on this one. So if there's no more questions from the board, uh, we'll go ahead and open it up for public comment and hopefully we can get through this and then, uh, get to an action item to approve. Moving forward, uh, with the letter of support for the submission. Okay, uh, Jake, uh, can you open up the room? And what we're doing is we're looking just, you know, we're going to approve a letter of support to help move forward through stage two and potentially adding three and four in their potential. Um, so go ahead, Jake.
All right. We had some hands come up. The first hand that came up was from, uh, Brian Dubrowski.
Okay.
Brian, you are unmuted. You want to give us a sound check?
Yeah. Can you hear me? I just have a quick question for Dr. Pace.
Yes.
If we move forward with this, uh, letter and approving the mandatory masking, at what point do we do away with the mandatory masking? That's what I got.
Uh, Dr. Pace, would you like to come on in for that? I'll have to, go ahead, Dr. Pace.
Sure. Um, you know, what, what we're going to be looking at is the course of the virus as we move through the opening process. So right now, what, the way I'm thinking about this is the mask will be mandatory as we're making steps forward. But once it looks like the virus is, is calm and passed, or that we've got a level of immunity in the population that's safe, or that the masks aren't really useful. So at this point, I don't, there's not an obvious endpoint. But, um, you know, this is a rapidly changing situation and we'll just have to see what the, uh, what the CDC is recommending and all, all those sorts of things. So I don't have, I don't have a particular endpoint at this point.
Okay. Thank you very much, Dr. Pace. All right, Bruno?
Yeah, I, I do want to say, thank you. I, I do want to say that in reading all the other applications that I went through from other counties, it seemed a lot of times that when they reach stage four is when the masks, uh, would, uh, go away because at stage four, you can now go back to, uh, uh, large gatherings and things like that, um, where that would be safe. And so at that point, that'd be kind of getting back to the normal life that we're all hoping to get to. So that's what I saw a lot of. That doesn't mean that that's what it has to be. But just as a point of reference.
Thank you. Okay. Uh, next one, Jake.
All right. Our next hand up was from Denise. Uh, Denise, I have you unmuted. Will you give me a sound check, please?
I'm here.
Thank you. We can hear you.
Okay. Um, I just want to say I, I would love to move forward with this. And I do appreciate the board supervisors in trying to move forward. And thank you, Bruno, for clarifying when, when possibly the masks would come back off if, um, the masks are approved. Um, I for one is I have asthma, so the mask is, uh, very, very hard on me. I begin choking wearing them. Um, I don't mind going through the door. If I don't have to stay very long or don't have to do anything, um, very strenuous. Again, thank you everyone and thank you for, for trying to move forward.
Thank you, Denise. Okay, Jake.
Okay, our next hand up is from Mark and Lucia.
Yeah, I again, just wa, just wanted to, um, put my vote in for moving forward with Dr. Pace's plan. And, um, whatever changes, uh, responsible board members seem to want to make. I appreciate their um, consideration of all the different opinions out there, but, um, uh, sticking with Dr. Pace's plan in its totality seems to be the smartest way since he is after all the expert on this. And, uh, and I believe he does have our best public health interests at heart.
Okay. Thank you, Mark. Jake, go to the next, uh,
Okay. And that actually is all the hands that we have up at this moment. Oops. We had another one just pop up, but this is a repeat from Brian Dubrowski.
Different question. All right. We'll take one last one for Brian. Go ahead, Brian.
Uh, trying to unmute your, uh, mic here, Brian. Are, are you there?
Can you hear, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. Sorry about that. I had a glitch going on. So, um, my other question was, is, you know, I've also forgot that Dr. Pace did not, um, answer one of my questions is probably because I had a lot of them in the beginning. Um, one of them was the impacts to wearing a mask is that they actually become a moisture trap and could become a breeding ground for bacteria, causing an additional illness. Is this a pos, is this actually a danger for wearing a mask? I, I keep hearing from a lot of people who are involved in the medical field that absolutely say that it, those masks could be detrimental to health too. The other question was, based on the climate that we're seeing in Lake County right now, does he believe, does Dr. Pace believe that our county is currently in a state of emergency as a county right now? That's all I got.
All right. Well, with Dr. Pace's order, we're going to bring it back to the board for, uh, action after this. So we'll know if you have, uh, would like to address those questions, Dr. Pace?
Sure. Um, well, so a couple of things with the mask is, uh, I, I, you know, I think there's probably some theoretical concerns about that, but that's not a particular uh, something that we're seeing a problem with, uh, the concerns that Brian's bringing up about causing infection because of the bacteria capturing. And I think that's more of a theoretical thing. The, uh, other person that had the question about having asthma and having problems with the mask, that's actually a really good point. And there will be a, um, you know, a disclaimer that people that have certain chronic medical conditions should not wear a mask. And that's, that's a true point. And so you probably want to carry something that sort of describes what your situation is. So if the people at the store ask you that you have a, some kind of, you know, whatever doctor's note or something that would be useful for that. I think the third thing is, is are we in a state of emergency? That's kind of the question. I mean, on the state level, the state is in a state of emergency. We have declared a public health emergency in, I have declared a public health emergency in Lake County a couple of months ago. And, um, you know, I think there's this, what I would encourage people not to do is get a false sense of security here because we've done so well. You know, as we're loosening up, things are going to spike most likely. And, um, we're seeing that in other places around the country and around the world. And so, you know, we are still in a very active state of infection in California and in the country. And so we are, we're trying to loosen things up and see where it goes. But, you know, really mostly the expert testimony right now is that we need to not open too fast, that there's real risk to doing that, and we need to be very vigilant. And so that's what we're trying to do. So yes, I would consider us still in a state of a public health emergency now. And hopefully we can get out of it here before too terribly long. But I kind of think that we're going to be dealing, we're going to be kind of struggling with this for a, a fair amount of time, but we'll see. Uh, hopefully I'm wrong.
Thank you, Dr. Pace. Okay. We'll bring it back to the board for action. It was an actionable item. So Bruno, I don't know if you, or is there other comment or discretion at this point?
If there's no further comment, I move to approve the letter of support for submission of Lake County's variants and attestation form as per the requirements of variants to stage two of California's roadmap to modify the stay at home order guidance to county governments.
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Supervisor Crandall, second. All right. We'll go ahead and, um, we have the roll call vote. Please call.
Yeah. Carolyn, go ahead. Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
No.
And Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. That takes care of the, uh, action we needed to take care of today. A letter of support to move forward. There was a lot of good discussion from both the community and us. So that's a four one vote that we are submitting this and, and ready to move forward. All right. With that, that will, uh, adjourn our meeting for today. This special meeting of May 6th, uh, or sorry, May, uh, 17th? 18th. Sorry. Where is it? May 16th? Sorry about that. May 18th, uh, 2020, uh, the Board of Supervisors. So thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.